Okay. Ready? Okay.
You want to wait?
We can start.
Okay, go ahead. Okay, I'd like to call the meeting, the Umatilla Planning Commission meeting Tuesday, October twenty eighth, twenty twenty five to order. Before, before we do roll call or pledge card, we want to do the introductions with our new commissioner.
Correct, we want to do a new introduction so that we can include her in roll call.
Would you like to introduce her?
Yes, we have a new commissioner that's been added to commission, her name is Carmen Puerta, and I will give her a few seconds to tell us a little about, a little bit about herself and what her interests are and what interested her in joining the planning commission.
Hello, yes, my name is Carmen Puerta and I'm a full-time Realtor. I started this year and I work for Bright Group. It's located, oops, it's located in Hermiston, right next to Neighbor Dune, so it's easy to find. I've lived in Umatilla for three and a half years and and I, part of the reason why I wanted to join the planning, um, mission department is because I wanted to be involved with what's going on in my town and also with being a Realtor, I want to be
Be covered, you go down the floor down, just push it one.
Got it, okay, um, I also want to be in tune with what's going on so I can best serve my clients.
Very good.
Awesome, so I will now take roll call.
Wait, before you do, can we say welcome?
Oh, we're sorry, we're ready to roll. Let's, let's have the commissioners, uh, welcome Carmen, you can go one by one, we'll start.
Yeah. No questions or bad questions? Okay, thank you.
Ready, anything else? Okay, yeah. Commissioner Carmen Puerta? Is she here?
Yes.
Commissioner Yessenia Leon Tejeda, so she is on her way. Commissioner Veronica Gutierrez is excused. Commissioner Kelly Nobles?
Here.
Commissioner Carol Jones?
Here.
And Commissioner Jennifer Cooper?
Here.
We meet quorum.
Okay, if we could, we would have the pledge of allegiance, please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Now we'd like to have the approval of the minutes, does anybody have anything, uh, any comments about the minutes?
I move we approve the minutes from September twenty third, twenty twenty five, a second.
Commissioner Puerta? Oh, I'm sorry. This is, this is commissioner's first time, so let me just take a quick second to just guide her. So, the, the agenda that I emailed you contains the minutes from the previous meeting. So when we start our meeting, we start by looking over those minutes and seeing if we all agree to what was happened, so um, after you look them over, if you have any concerns or typos, you say, hey, you know what? I saw that page number two had a typo or had some errors or I remember the meeting a little bit different, we can make changes. But when the commissioners, um, make a motion, that means that they first move to approve the minutes as presented. And then we have somebody second and then we'll do roll call and ask each individual commissioner if they agree. So if they do, they respond with I. Okay, and, um, or it's yea or a or nay, a or, or nay. So whichever you'd like is fine. You know, if, if you agree, you say I, and if you don't, you can state whatever, um, concerns you have. Okay, so I'll start with a roll call from the beginning. Commissioner Puerta?
Aye.
Commissioner Jones?
Aye.
Commissioner Cooper?
Aye.
And just a little, um, quick FYI, so, uh, Kelly Nobles is our commission chair and so he doesn't vote unless it fits a tiebreaker. Okay, and so, um, voting is three zero, the motion passes.
Thank you Nancy, so now we move on to new business, we don't have any new business on the agenda department, but normally when we do have items, we'll, we'll, we'll do this work, staff will summarize, we'll give us a summary where we show. Then the applicant has done the file, then there'll be public testimony in favor of, public testimony in opposition, neutral testimony, revival testimony from the applicant, then we close the record, we won't propose it, then we get to deliberate and talk. And then we make, we vote, we vote, that's kind of, I don't read that every time, so when we do have, we'll do to order. But tonight we don't have any, so we'll, we'll move on to commissioner information and discussion, please.
And for this, we have our community development directors at RAKI via Zoom and we will be presenting our yearly report, yearly planning commission report. And this will seek recommendation from the commissioners to be presented to city council.
Okay, can everyone hear me?
Can you hear me on the big screen?
Oh, I'm sorry.
It would just be my head on the big screen.
Zach, we don't, give us one second, we can't hear you quite yet.
Oh, okay.
But the records show that Commissioner Yessenia Leon Tejeda has joined commission meeting at six thirty seven. Okay Zach, I think we're ready for you now.
Can you all hear me now?
Yeah, hello Zach?
Yeah.
Okay, good evening, everyone, looks like my big head is in the chambers there. Um, welcome, uh, to our new commissioner, uh, Carmen Puerta. Um, glad to have you there and, uh, glad to see everyone there. Apologies, I got called out to a, uh, housing legislation workshop by Dave Stockdale, so I'm currently in Eugene right now, but I'm glad to join you all electronically tonight. So yeah, the item brought before you is our annual report, uh, basically just outlining some of the vital statistics that we've, uh, had throughout the community development department, uh, since last fall, so since October of twenty twenty four till now. Um, goes through just some of the statistics of the applications that came through for planning commission this year, um, in addition to how that measures out to previous years as well. So you kind of see that, you know, twenty twenty five looks a little bit less busy than previous years. Um, obviously, as you all know, that development, uh, kind of ebbs and flows a little bit um, in, in our part of Oregon, but, um, really, uh, just kind of paints a picture that this year, yeah, there might have been fewer applications coming through, but, um, there was also some pretty big items that came through, that came through for planning commission discussion and, uh, things like that. If you can recall, um, yeah, cool, so looking at our total numbers, we had ten applications come through for planning commission compared to sixteen in twenty twenty four, seventeen in twenty twenty three. Um, but our five-year application total is seventy-four and as, um, as you recall, in the employment opportunities and buildable lands inventory analysis, we are looking to pretty much double our population and, uh, job numbers in Umatilla of the next number of decades, so expect to be busier, excuse me, expect to be busier, um, as the years come by and, um, as Nancy and I can attest, certainly the staff workload is pretty heavy right now as well, so some of that stuff's going to be coming down the pike. Uh, for the planning commission in twenty twenty six and the remainder of twenty seven. So the, uh, the report also talks a little bit about planning commission attendance, we like to keep these numbers just to um, show council, you know, in- involvement and, um, just how busy the planning commission was. As you can see, there was a, a couple of meetings that were, were canceled or postponed. And so, yeah, um, just a good rundown on attendance. Uh, we do provide a summary of some of the, uh, larger or more notable items, uh, coming through, so some of the notable items, I'm not going to go through them word by word, because, uh, everyone's read their packet, but, um, you know, Umatilla Police Department, uh, adding a communication antenna, Fast Track subdivision, seventy-six acres and a hundred and three new residential lots coming to Umatilla. Um, we had Cheryl's Place subdivision as well, seventy-six new lots. And, um, in July, uh, planning commission held a joint workshop with the Umatilla City Council to discuss the economic opportunities analysis, buildable lands inventory and, um, how those two documents and studies lead to urban growth boundary expansion. Um, as you recall, that was mainly focused on, uh, industrial jobs coming in, such as the data centers that we are all proud of, as well as, uh, commercial jobs coming in as well, but being able to outline a predictive number of jobs coming in will better enable us to expand our urban growth boundary and further develop and accommodate, um, new job growth in the region as well. Nancy threw in some interesting facts about planning commission, formed in Hartford, Connecticut in nineteen oh seven and, um, just, uh, kind of some interesting things ahead. And what twenty twenty six, um, we are expecting growth, uh, a lot of our work coming across our desks. Um, will come in front of the planning commission. Um, as you know, I've been on staff since August first and, uh, we're looking at, um, updating some of our zoning code, um, some design standards, we're kind of kicking around some different ideas that will definitely have to workshop through planning commission and get approval as well. And we talk about training too. Um, if we have a light agenda like this evening, which we didn't have anything scheduled, there might be something through the Oregon APA or National APA, American Planning Association, um, just a quick ten or fifteen minute primer video on something to look at, um, and something to help better round all of us, staff and commission on, uh, items of note and education. Um, in addition to just the intricacies of Oregon State planning law as well, uh, something that I'm learning and I think that would be better, uh, equipped for us as well. And then, of course, if we see off-site training opportunities, um, conferences, that sort of thing, we'll definitely put that in front of y'all and, um, see if you can get on site with, uh, uh, some other planning commissioners and other planning professionals to learn a little bit more about our world, so. With that, that's just a brief rundown of our annual report, as Nancy mentioned, this is a recommendation, um, for forwardization, uh, to, uh, city council, but I don't think we're seeking formal recommendation unless I'm wrong, but Nancy can correct me on that. But, um, Nancy and I are here to take any questions of the planning commission.
Well, it's a great report Zach, and we're going to be happy to, to pass a recommendation, whether it's required or not, because we want to show you the support. Um, I, I just have a quick question for you, one of my biggest takeaways from the joint planning commission was the things that I mentioned, but also, you know, we do the comprehensive plan every twenty years and we had just done the last one three, four years ago, maybe five, four, five, and it was unusual to update it so quickly and what I asked them was why? They wouldn't let us when we did that before, planned for the future growth. And the purpose, as I understand it, if we're going to expand the city limits to get buildable lands, which we're going to need to do, it's not easy to do that, we written, we did it a few years ago and the last eleven attempts, only two of them were passed by the state, the county, so it's difficult. If you don't have a comprehensive plan that supports the, the expansion of the city limits, you can't get it done. So really, I thought the purpose of that joint council was to get a comprehensive plan that will endorse us building into the county, so we'll have more buildable lands, is that, was that, is that the right takeaway?
Yeah, I think that, that's a good takeaway, I mean, undertaking an entire comprehensive plan amendment is a pretty heavy task. Um, and likely when we reach that point where we're required to do that in subsequent years, um, we'll likely be preparing for that a year or two in advance with the planning commission. But what was brought forth in, um, uh, July with the, uh, um, economic opportunities analysis and buildable lands inventory was mainly to change chapter nine of the comprehensive plan, which the language within was about twenty-five years old and it also alluded to employment numbers from the seventy, nineteen seventies, nineteen eighties. So as, as you and I talked, as we talked about, uh, a couple of months ago and we took the EOA to the planning commission, or maybe that was last month, wow. You know, having better data in our chapter nine economic development area, that's, you know, based on twenty twenty-five and not two thousand or nineteen eighty numbers, um, makes a better compelling case to the state of Oregon to expand our urban growth boundary. So while we didn't have to update our entire comprehensive plan on that, just updating that one chapter was a pretty, I wouldn't say small lift, but it wasn't a heavy lift either, but it better enabled us and positioned us to make a more compelling case to the state of Oregon for that urban growth expansion, um, uh, in the future.
Well, I gotta, I gotta thank you and, and the, uh, I very much appreciate it because all of these things are so complex, so interconnected and to get to that point, if you weren't doing all of this, we'd, we'd never be able to do it, so. It's great that you guys not only know how to do it, are doing that for us and doing it in such a nice way, thanks for explaining that.
You bet.
And it's nice to see the city of Umatilla is growing. I have heard from so many developers and contractors that say, I love driving by your downtown, it has come a long way. So that's what's visible, that's what you can see just by driving by, imagine what you can't see. Imagine the businesses and the residents and the single family and multifamily. We, we are reaching a level of growth where, you know, there's not a lot of land, there's not a lot of space and so I think it's great to see that growth in our community and to see the public being served.
Indeed.
Because if anything goes to add, we could, or we're looking for a motion to, like, maybe present this to the city council.
I make a motion that we, uh, approve this to be represented to city council. I'm sorry. The community development annual report. I'll second that.
Commissioner Puerta?
Aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Leon Tejeda?
Aye.
Commissioner Jones?
Aye.
Commissioner Cooper?
Aye.
The motion carries.
Okay. I do have a point of order, uh, Mr. Chairman, maybe it's not a point of order, I forget the term under parliamentary procedure, but, uh, to add a discussion item to talk about the scheduling of the November and December meetings, since they do fall on the fourth Tuesday of the month typically, but those would be around Thanksgiving and Christmas. Um, I will state that we do have a couple of items coming up in November that will need to be heard in front of the planning commissions, so I wanted to put that item on the table if that's acceptable to you, Mr. Chairman.
You bet, and Nancy, I think, didn't we address this last meeting about, of the Thanksgiving break and, and whether we were having a meeting or not? Did, did we decide, unless we had business, we weren't, perhaps we need to have a, a reason?
I think we agreed that if there were applications, we'd, uh, look into that date, which we already know for sure, we have at least one application, maybe two for November, so now we have to set a date.
Okay, and, and right now, um, the fourth Tuesday is going to be two days before Thanksgiving?
That's correct.
Does anybody have a conflict?
I don't have a conflict, I don't have a conflict.
It does. Um, because of the timing with the public notice and the hearing, it would actually have to be on the twentieth or twenty-first in order for us to make the timeframe for making legal public notice.
I still have a conflict.
That's a Thursday or Friday?
I'm still good, Friday I can.
So maybe Thursday, the twentieth?
What, can I explain something to you, right? Usually public notice means you have to be at least four weeks, so we have to be, soon, we still have that window, if we didn't have a five day?
No, so, um, we have to notice twenty days ahead. So that means that the applications that we currently have, and I'm already working with applicants, I'd have to do notice tomorrow. So, and that's for Thursday. So, and then if we do Friday, that would be, um, Thursday, that, the day that we need to notice. But, um, Commissioner Leon Tejeda has shared that she is not available on Friday, the twenty-first, so it looks like the twentieth is a date that might work, does that work for everybody?
If we did it on the twenty-fifth, we'd actually have more.
You, you mean the, the Tuesday, but it's a Tuesday before a holiday.
The holiday's there.
Yes, the holiday is on Thursday, so it's the Tuesday before the holiday.
But if, and that, if we have quorum, could we do it on the Tuesday? That's, I think, what we're asking.
I believe so.
So if we did it on the twenty-fifth?
If we kept it on the twenty-fifth?
Yeah, that's what everybody says, I think, and we would have plenty of time, right?
Yep, and I think for December, it's the twenty-third, right before the
That one.
That one, that one will definitely probably have to change, but yes, we could do November, the twenty-fifth, if that works for our commissioners.
The third, December instead of the fourth, and get it out of the Christmas week.
What day is that?
That's the sixteenth.
I'll do that, yeah.
And we actually know the, no, pla- um, city council has a second and third Tuesday, right Zach?
Um, first and third Tuesdays.
I'm sorry, first and third, first and third, so that Tuesday wouldn't work.
Is the Thursday available on the city schedule?
Let me check right now.
The eighteen?
The eighteen, the I can do the eighteen, that's fine.
Okay, let's see.
So we won't need a motion to move the, the November meeting, because it's already over scheduled, but we wouldn't need a motion to move the December to Thursday, the eighteenth.
Um, uh, in, it seems like in my time here on the council, we, I don't think we've ever had a December meeting.
Yeah, it's usually, it's usually really close to Christmas.
Yeah. Right, but will we have business for December?
We won't know, so usually, like, like this time around, we, we knew applications might come in, so we had a little bit of a heads up, but until an application is complete, we cannot take it into consideration to present.
So should we, should we kind of table December until the November meeting?
What, what if we go ahead and say, if we have a meeting, it'll be scheduled for them, so that we don't, we, we don't need any conflicts about timely announcing the meeting? We can see the meeting, we there, then we can always cancel it.
Okay.
That's the December stat.
Yes, I agree, so I, I can't I cannot check the, the council chambers' schedule right now. Um, Zach, do you have access?
Yeah, what date are we looking at?
Thursday, December eighteenth.
I'll see what I can find out.
Thanks for bringing that up Zach, be good to be on front of it, and if we don't have business, then we'll just, uh, we'll cancel it like we don't.
Correct. Well, now they can. But when the mics are off, you can't hear.
Hold on, I'm getting there. The council chambers is open on December eighteenth.
Okay.
I move that we move the December meeting to December eighteenth, rather than the Tuesday before Christmas.
And can you also speak on the November meeting?
We're not changing that.
Yeah, to remain?
It's the same date.
Oh, and we keep the November meeting on the existing day.
So it's the first?
Second?
Okay. Commissioner Puerta?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon Tejeda?
Aye.
Commissioner Jones?
Aye.
Commissioner Cooper?
Aye.
The motion carries.
So Nancy, can you, can you check with Dave or somebody and, and to Zach's point, find out if we did this properly? And if we did, what kind of notice, do we have to put it in the paper that we're, we're having a meeting at a different, different time than we normally state?
So, um, about the noticing, um, I will make sure to, there is a public notice that has to happen. So if we, in this case, the November meeting remains the same, when I send out the notice and it's, it is, um, on the newspaper, it will have the date of the meeting, so let's say December is already for the eighteenth, then I have a timeframe of when I need to obtain the complete applications, and if I do have complete applications, I will mail twenty days ahead. So because the holidays are a little, um, tricky, and we already know we will have a November meeting, I will let the commission know when I do the public notice, like, hello commissioners, just letting you guys know, I did submit for this public notice today and so the meeting continues, if I do not receive it by the cutoff date, we will not hold a meeting because we do not have enough time to make public notice.
That's fantastic, perfect, and, and just to clarify, that's not only the notice for the applications of, of, that's a notice of our meeting.
That, it's only when there is an application to present.
We don't have to notify the public when we're meeting?
No, because it's already a, a scheduled meeting and the only way that the December meeting will change is if you receive an application, so it's regularly scheduled.
But my, but my point is, not only the notification for the applications, but if we do schedule a December meeting, then the public needs to know, not only because of the applications that we're changing the meeting, right?
So they, they're all posted online, so at any moment when anybody wants to know, that's where we're directing our public.
So we don't have, we don't have to post, paper anything, what, what meetings are?
No, it's already scheduled on a normal basis, the only time we need to, um, let the public know is when it changes and the specific applications that we receive. So again, the majority of the time?
In this particular case, it is changed, and if we do do it on the eighteenth, then that would be a, a lot of, of reasons that we would have to make the exception to the public.
Correct, if we would notify the public only if we do receive an application, because if we don't, we will not hold it on that day. Yes, and so, yeah, and so, and if, like I have shared with other people and I believe I've shared with the commission, if you have any questions or have people want to reach out or obtain that link for our meetings, have them reach out to me or have them go online. It's, it's fairly easy to navigate, the website is fairly easy to navigate, but I understand that when you're not used to seeing it, it's new, you might get a little lost, I'm so seasoned to seeing it on the daily basis, takes me two seconds to find it. So any questions, any help, or even commissioners, if you have questions of things you see on the website, feel free to just reach out.
You, you're really good at doing that too, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
The reason, just the math didn't make sense to me, because if, if you have to say, give a thirty-day notice about changing the meeting, and, and our meeting in, in November is on the twenty-fourth, then if our meeting in December is on the eighteenth and we decide on the twenty-fourth we're going to have that meeting, we wouldn't have thirty days.
Yeah, well, you wouldn't have it before the next planning commission meeting, but I would, because I would obtain the application before your next planning commission meeting. That means whoever comes and says, hey, I, I have a variance or I have a conditional use, I'd say I have to receive it by this date in order to do the public notice. And if I do receive one, it would be closer to mid-November instead of, um, the end of November. If I do receive one, I will let you all know, so that you can be ahead of time prepared to know that we will meet in mid-December.
Okay, so, I think I'm explaining it well. I, I, I get the part about the public notice for application, but some of that is the additional public notice required for a different meeting time. So the public, whether they care about the application or not, they want to know when we're meeting thirty days in advance, right? So if we're going to meet December eighteenth, November So if we're going to meet December eighteenth, November eighteenth prior to that has to say the planning commission has has a meeting at a different time.
Yes, so there there are two different instances. Um, if, let's say we have an application today that's postponed for the next meeting, then planning commission decides a specific date and time for that meeting. And so in this case, um, I understand what you're saying, Kelly, that the date has changed, so we need to notify the public. But the only reason why we will notify the public is if we have an application, because if we don't receive an application, we're not going to have that meeting at all. So if we do, we will, and there are people that are subscribed to the, to our updates online, and they should receive those updates as it's posted online. And we have that information available a week ahead of time. And if anybody wants to ask for a public records request or get previous minutes or the agenda, and they don't, let's say they just don't want to go through the hassle of doing it online and they just want to come see me, they can schedule a meeting and I will go through the agenda and and have a conversation with them. So I understand what you're saying is because we're changing it, do we need to notify? Yes, if we do have the meeting, we will notify ahead of time, but that will only be if we do receive an application, because if we don't receive an application, we won't have this meeting. And you guys are pretty much off the hook for that meeting.
You did, so and I understood that further why we would have nothing. All this check, I, my concern was in the event of advertising a meeting change, nothing about an application or anything else, does that have to be noted before newspaper or is just online good enough? And I'll check on this later, right?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, we can check in on that. Any changes to the standard planning commission schedule will notify as depicted in code. I don't have that in front of me right now, but if we do change that date, we will provide that proper notification. Um, and then obviously, if we cancel a meeting, we have to notify that as well. But um, you know, we can certainly find out the uh nuts and bolts of that and um make sure that we're notifying the public of any meeting change uh accordingly.
Well, that's, that sounds great. This is very unique because I've never been through a meeting change in years of years. So thanks for helping us work.
Of course. And these minutes will reflect, the planning commission will um look over these minutes next meeting and approve or deny. And so that should be up in the website. The, they will, they will be up on the website as draft until the planning commission approve it. So they, if somebody is keeping track and and trying to keep tabs, they should be able to do that fairly easily.
Excellent, thank you very much. I don't see anything else on the, on the agenda. Am I missing anything else?
No.
No, sir.
That's it for today.
Is it happy hour? That case list depends, meaning adjourned, thank you.
We need, we need a motion.
Oh, you know?
Yes.
I, I motion that we adjourn the meeting for tonight for the planning committee. I second that.
Okay, we'll do a roll call. Commissioner Puerta? Commissioner Leon Tejeda?
Aye.
Commissioner Jones? Commissioner Cooper?
Aye.
Motion carries and the meeting is adjourned.
Let's, I have a good off the record question. What's the update with the planning, the new building? The business change? Are we being built? What's the scoop?
Yeah, we are still looking at um November, December opening of the building, but um we're just working through construction. There were some construction delays on concrete because data centers took all the concrete for deliveries one week. So um, we're, you know, we don't necessarily have, I I don't want to say a concrete date because that's just a terrible pun. Um, but you know, we're working through just the details of what we get in, there's progress. There was a ton of subcontractors out on the site today, um, working hard on the building. So I think in the next couple of weeks, uh, we should be able to get a a more closer date that we could quote that it would be opening. Um, and certainly, I think that could also be something we add to the November agenda too, is just a quick update on that building as well. So I'll make a note of that. Um, because that's a big planning item and a big business development item for the community, so.
Exactly. Thanks very much for taking the time to zoom in with us.
Hey, you bet. The technology enables us to do so and I'm happy to be here this.